Tom, are we ready?
Yeah.
We're ready.
Good morning, everyone. Jason Lee, Chair of the Board of Trustees. Welcome to the May 17, 2019 Board of Trustees meeting. It's a fine sunny San Francisco day as opposed to a little rain that we got yesterday. Let's take the roll call and then we're going to go immediately into closed. Do we have an estimate in terms of how long we're going to be in close? I think we have. Okay, 9:45. So let's start with the roll call and then I'll go into closed.
Broughton. Chen. Bella Cruz. Dylan. Duran.
Here.
LeBron. Manning.
Here.
Mendoza. Chula.
Here.
Salad. Stalling. And Brack.
Here. Thank you, Sarah. So we are now going to close session pursuant to Government Code Section 11126. So they were all like, they were all.
They don't have, they don't have.
They were all sitting on the. But moving into the beginning of opening session. Jason Lee back again. If I could, I'll start with the roll call.
Broughton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Bella Cruz.
Here.
Dylan. Duran.
Here.
LeBron.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Chula.
Here.
Salad.
Here.
Stalling.
Here.
Cypher.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to make a call for public comments. If there's anyone out there who wishes to make public comment, we'll start with those who are sitting here live in Los Angeles. I'm sorry, San Francisco.
We're up there.
No one. Anyone over in the phone? Okay. Does anyone wish to discuss or the minutes? Any objection having them adopted? Seeing none. They're adopted. So my report really quick. I'll take the sort of administrative stuff first, which is a encouragement to attend the admission ceremonies that are rolling out throughout the state. And Sarah had placed a matrix of the ceremonies are going to be rolled out and the folks that we need to attend. And has anyone attended one if maybe give 15 seconds, Sean? And then Ruben about how that is.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. I was going to speak up because I really would encourage you to go. It's a very sweet thing and it's fun. You show up, the new admitees are there with their families and they're very proud. And it's a very, very happy event. So I think it's very meaningful if more officials who show up to the events, more meaningful families and the admitees and you'll really enjoy it. It's a real positive experience. Ruben?
Yeah, I would echo that. I attended one in Pasadena last go around and it was actually a very formal event with a program. I was given a speaker slot. There were nine justices of one of the appellate district courts there that did also spoke. And it was just as Sean said, the families of the new admitees and they themselves are super excited. It was a really, really fun event.
Alan, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say I've done it.
Oh, great. Excellent. The other administrative item is the addition of Juan to our liaison and committee assignments. So that is in the materials. So welcome again, Juan. Now it's, I guess, time to get to work.
Sorry, Jason, can I just? On the admissions, I said I would do Pasadena if no one else would. I've done it before and I'm more than happy to let someone else do it.
Your invitation is out there.
I mean, you know, I dig out my old speech. I'm sure really nobody needs to hear from me there. So if somebody would like the experience, they should really have that opportunity. Okay.
I'm happy to do Pasadena. Someone has asked me to do Orange County, which was more of a community.
I think, Helen, I think they would be so much happier to hear from the managing partner of the committee than me.
Well, so I guess Sarah, would you be the contact person to coordinate?
It's Kim Wong.
Kim Wong, oh, right, okay.
We can send it out.
Yeah.
I like this. Deal is already being made.
Yeah.
And I'll do Ventura.
Okay, anyone, who are we missing though? Riverside?
And Orange County.
I can do Riverside.
I'll do Orange.
If somebody wants it.
Okay.
I need to San Diego.
It's great.
Instant action.
San Diego?
Going once.
Going once. I got a couple of good restaurant recommendations. Well. Bookmark that. We'll apply some more pressure later. So I just wanted to focus everyone's attention for today's meeting. As everyone knows, Leah, myself, Alan have been hard at work making the case for a fee increase overall, the concept of a fee increase not having one in the last 20 years and the acute financial condition that the state bar is in. The, among many other messages, a message that we've all been highly attuned to is the idea that any kind of fee increase could disproportionately impact certain licensees, particularly those in the legal services community, nonprofits, and those that don't, let's say, make the type of income that would rise to above, let's say, middle income. So there's an agenda item here today where we're going to engage in a discussion about how we can lessen that burden to those who may be overburdened by any type of fee increase. We've all seen the numbers that are out there. They are in different ranges, but even a small percentage increase could impact those licensees. So I just wanted to highlight that agenda item if, and when that comes. It's the last item on the agenda. We will engage in a open dialogue about how to best accomplish that. So with that, I will turn it over to Leah.
The assignments.
Oh, I did that.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thanks.
We don't have to do a resolution?
I think it's just.
First, we did. You can substitute the roll call.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought this was just a chair thing. I have to get a motion. Is that right?
Uh huh.
Okay. Anyone with a motion to adopt the chair assignments to the committees and liaisons with the inclusion of Juan? Sean? Or Ruben?
That was me. Ruben.
Okay, Ruben. All right, can I substitute roll call? Thank you. So adopted? Now, thank you. I'll move on to Leah, the executive director's report.
I don't have a formal report for this, other than what's supposed to be the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So I'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull an item on the consent agenda? Just take your time to peruse the very lengthy consent agenda. Not seeing anyone raise a hand. Any objection to adopting the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none. Those are adopted. Turning to the board committee reports. The, I don't have anything to report on the executive committee. I'll turn it over to any, there's no item there in the agenda right now, but if there's, you know, Sean, I'll go with you if you want to say a few words about the committee meeting yesterday on RAB.
Um, no, I don't think there's anything to report. Okay.
Programs?
Guess I'll just give a quick update. So on behalf of.
Go to microphone.
Okay.
So Brandon Stollings, on behalf of Programs Committee along with Vice Chair Demi Manning, we have been hard at work and I just want to commend staff on their excellent work in the updating of the MCLE Provider Upload Program. I think there's been a lot of collaboration between us, between nonprofit providers of MCLE and even large providers of MCLE in finding a solution that allows the state bar to more accurately audit our licensees and to make sure that they are in fact taking part in the MCLE programs that they are reporting to have taken. So it just really protects the public and it gives us an added tool in ensuring that our lawyers are properly trained and are providing the best possible representation. So I want to commend staff on working with all the stakeholders in that project. I know it was a large project. And also we're taking a deep dive into exam security, given recent reports in the news about other admissions type programs, especially really undergrad programs. That's causing us to take a deep dive into our own procedures. So we look forward to bringing our recommendations to the full board. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Brandon. What about anything on finance and finance?
Yes, I think because of the way the resolutions were drafted, I need to present them to the full boards for adoption as well. We approved the, except for the first quarter financial report for the state bar. The investment report, client security report were part of that. And we also did a budget amendment to allow for some additional aspects of the enterprise resource planning system. And I would move those items to the board.
Can you clarify? Those were all adopted in the consent calendar.
They were?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's what we did.
We just went through those very, very quickly and there were a lot.
Then I hold the draw. Thank you.
Thanks, Mala. Anything to report on the, as chair?
Okay. Jason?
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
I know I asked, but I just reflected on a couple of things. Just the board members might want to know if they weren't at the RAB. First was we had a very good presentation from, a bunch of them. One was from Stowe on the initiative to look at using AI systems in the intake process, which is very interesting and can be an important innovation for us. Second was a presentation from Donna about some reforms to our probation system. And Mark and Brandon have volunteered to participate in that. The idea being we want to bring in some innovative practices from criminal court system, you know, collaborative courts into our probation system so that it's more focused on rehabilitation and will reduce recidivism. And the final thing we talked about in a little bit of detail were some implementation issues with the Odyssey Case Management System. And both from the meeting yesterday and more importantly from private discussions, our staff is really on top of that and working to get with our vendor to get those problems resolved. Mostly about reporting issues, some functionality issues.
Thanks, Sean. You know, I, you know, when I was listening to Steve report on the AI processing of complaints, I was thinking, you know, maybe in 10 years, there's going to be an AI that nominates other AIs to sit on this floor. So, you know, we heard it here first. We'll see if that, that happens within that.
Or you just use our avatars to sit here.
Right. Mark, anything you want to add on the audit?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
The financial statements were filed and completed and approved and that's really all there is to report.
Great, unqualified audit opinion. Always good news. Okay, so let's go on then. Thank you, everyone, for running very efficient committee meetings yesterday. So let's move on to item 701 on the agenda. And this is Donna, I see you coming up. The appendix eye review, my favorite review in a number of subparts. So I'll, I'll let you take us through that. Thank you.
Great, there is some PowerPoint? Good morning. Sorry, I know better than that. Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. This agenda item is, presents follow-up recommendations related to the actions that you all took in September, November, January, and March pursuant to the kinds eye review regarding state bar subentities. I apologize, I'm having technological difficulties this morning. Do you want to advance it, Sarah? Not a lot of super complicated things to cover today, but the reason I've got the PowerPoint is because there are multiple semi unrelated items within this agenda item today. And so I just wanted to lay out for you what we're going to be talking about. First, we're going to be looking at recommendations regarding the lawyer assistance program and how to proceed with the separation of the voluntary part of the lawyer assistance program from the bar. Then I'm going to ask you for approval for adoption of a series of rules following public comment. These were rule changes that were put forward, put up for public comment to implement the recommendations you all adopted regarding changes to the roles and responsibilities of the subentity and staff. And finally, I am going to ask you to re-adopt rules governing the online accreditation of JD Perez. Next slide, please. So starting with the lawyer assistance program. Your first consideration of structural changes to the lawyer assistance program happened at the September 2018 board meeting. At that time, you were deciding whether to maintain the lawyer assistance program status quo at the state bar, to separate the voluntary part of the lawyer assistance program and have only what we refer to as mandatory part and stay with the state bar, or to separate all of the lawyer assistance program from the state bar. At that September meeting, you decided that the direction was either to separate the voluntary portion of the lawyer assistance program or to separate all of the lawyer assistance program. Asked us to come back in November for further discussion and narrowing down those two options. At the, your November board meeting, the decision was made that the mandatory portion of the lawyer assistance program, those are the discipline referrals through our alternate discipline program as well as moral character referrals for those who are going through the moral character process and have their moral character decisions abated pending lawyer assistance program evaluation and participation. That those mandatory pieces would remain with the bar and the voluntary pieces of the lawyer assistance program, self referrals, the support LAPs, referred to as a number of things, would, would be separated out. The question that you were left with at that time was, well, how do we do that? What would be the method to separate out the voluntary portion of the lawyer assistance program? We discussed two possible options. One was what we refer to as a contract out option, where the state bar would maintain the statutory obligation to operate the mandatory part of the lawyer assistance program. But that we would contract out the delivery of the day-to-day services and to something like an employee assistance program or some other entity that could handle the day-to-day operations. The lift out option, the alternative to the contract out, would transfer the obligation to, to operate the mandatory, the voluntary part of the LAP. That statutory obligation would no longer rest with the bar and instead, another entity would have responsibility for the obligation as well as the day-to-day delivery of services. So I am here today to present you a recommendation on that contract out versus lift out option. So what have we done since the November meeting when you asked us to come back with a recommendation on that decision? The LAP Oversight Committee and staff received a presentation on what the contracting out option could look like from a vendor who would be one of potentially, you know, a couple, a few vendors who might submit an RFP. And we also received a presentation from the California Lawyers Association. California Lawyers Association presentation was about the lift out option and the presentation we received from the Clear Matrix organization was describing what their contract out option could be. The proposals from both the California Lawyers Association and Clear Matrix for informational purposes are attachments A and B in the materials today. They both provided impressive presentations on what they might do with the voluntary portion of LAP. The Oversight Committee believed that they needed additional information before they were comfortable making a recommendation. They were not certain that the, that the option, the contracting out option that was presented could really be done within the funding that we had available. And at the time the option was developed, we hadn't put on, put on the table the amount of possible funding that would be available, which is roughly $1.1 million. So they thought additional information was necessary and they weren't comfortable making a recommendation at that time until they could secure additional information. The staff recommendation, after consideration of the proposals that we reviewed, and recommend a lift out option. And we recommend that California Lawyers Association specifically have the obligation for, for the LAP, voluntary LAP, and to perform the day-to-day operation and delivery of the voluntary LAP program. In short, the California Lawyers Association proposal would be that they would operate the program in the same way that it's currently operated. They are eager to have LAP staff who choose not to remain with the state bar join CLA and continue the operations. Their plan would be to contract with the same group facilitators that we use and that we would continue to use for the mandatory part of the program. So one of the issues that was discussed actually back in September was that there was value to the, the support groups having both those individuals who've gone through the discipline system as well as those who had not yet within the same group. By the CLA proposals, contract with the same group facilitators, we would maintain that mixture in the group of the mandatory participants being handled through the state bar program and the voluntary participants being handled through the CLA program. The plan would be that CLA would assume the same hotline number we have. So whatever brochures and post-it notes and information is out there with our hotline number on it, if anybody picks that up and they dial it, they would still get to the voluntary LAP program. Those who are in the mandatory program will know how to contact us. So we are not worried about losing that number. And the, the program would be available to all of those who are eligible for it today. CLA understood very clearly that it could not, the program could not be open simply to CLA members. It would be open to law students, applicants for the bar, current, current licensees, former licensees, whether they are, whether or not they are members of the California Lawyers Association. So why did we think that this was the best proposal? We thought that this would be the least disruptive to the participants. And it really just would be hopefully a seamless transition from one overseer of the program to another. We felt that it would absolutely, without question, be the least disruptive to the state bar staff. And frankly, it also best addresses the rationales for separation in the first place. And when we talked about this back in September, that you all had a debate over public protection and whether it was, whether the voluntary lawyer assistance program was appropriate to maintain within the functions and the regulatory mission that was retained by the bar. In addition, and maybe even more importantly, what we discussed. In addition, and maybe even more importantly, what we discussed was that the state bar simply cannot provide the help to attorneys if they're unwilling to seek it out. They are, if they're unwilling to come to the disciplinary authority over their profession because they have fears of confidentiality. They have fears, no matter sort of, there are, there are statutes in place which protect the confidentiality of their information. There are no assurances that we can, that we are able to effectively give them, to give them the confidence that, that the disciplinary authority over their profession is not going to have this information that they walk, when they walk in to the state bar and ask for help for this service. We presented you back in September with some survey data, for survey we had run and it was a very low percentage of attorneys who said that they would ever consider coming to the state bar to address this problem. If the purpose of LAP is to help lawyers with this problem, then we are not effectively performing this function if they will not walk in the door. We think that by separating the program as opposed to contracting it out, it will increase the likelihood that those who will benefit from the assistance would actually feel more comfortable seeking it out. They would feel more comfortable and their participation will be safe and the information would be confidential. So the staff recommendation with regard to this part of this agenda item is that we, we do the lift-out option and that specifically the California Lawyers Association would take over the obligation for the voluntary part of the LAP. Next slide. Moving on, we have...
Pete, Donna, do you think this would be a good time, given you're transitioning to another subject matter, to have any questions on?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on LAP? Sean?
Donna, thank you. Great presentation. So, question is, looking at the reserves that will be left over after this separation, do we think that we will be able to use some of those reserves to fund the pending claims in the client security fund?
So, so there are several possibilities on the table. As we talked about yesterday, we are looking at a, at new way of performing the functions of the mandatory part of LAP. We've done an analysis of how many staff we would need to retain in order to do that. We looked at the literature from the National Association of Drug Court Professionals to understand what appropriate staffing ratios would be. Based on that literature, we think we absolutely have the answer, but maybe we don't. Maybe there are additional pieces of information that we don't have. Maybe as we roll this out, we will need, we will discover that we need some additional support, whether it's contract support, whether it's part-time staff, full-time staff, in order to fully operate this. What we are proposing is a, a transfer, it would be an ongoing transfer of $1.1 million of the incoming money to CLA and also, I think it was $580,000 from the reserves for startup costs. The reserves are currently scheduled to be, I think, $3.5 million at the end of the year. The part of the question is the, the legislature's reaction to the audit proposal. The proposal from the state auditor was that we have the fee holiday for LAP and so we do not get the additional money in this year. We are, we have presented our, our opposition to that proposal because of this transition that we are doing. And what, what we said in response to the audit was, we need a little bit more time. The fee holiday may be appropriate in a year or two, but give us a little ramp-up time to figure out what this, exactly what the costs are and make sure that we don't end up shorting ourselves and the program from the ability to do the services. So I think in that same vein, you know, give us a year of operation of the program and to understand what we need there and then we can figure out the amount of reserves. But, and then it's a question of fee holiday, use it for client security fund and part of that would be a discussion with the legislature.
Any other questions on LAP? Donna, the CLA proposal, if adopted and is slots into CLA, what is the contemplated oversight of the program? Like who at CLA would be in charge?
So, and I apologize, I forgot to mention this. So we have obviously been in communications with CLA and the CLA board has, has adopted a, a resolution at their March 22nd board meeting indicating their desire to, to take over this program, should that be the will of this board. The lawyer assistance program, I don't have the exact organizational, organizational structure, but I have been working closely with the executive director at CLA and the director of strategic planning and operation, I think that's her title, on this program, on what they would be, what they would, they would propose to be doing with this program. They are looking at having an oversight committee that has mental health professionals on it and lawyers on it that would be conducting oversight over the program. In addition, we report annually to the legislature on the operation of the lawyer assistance program. What we are envisioning is that there would be, that, that the report would include a report from CLA to us on, because they will be using bar dues that are coming in. So they will report on their use of the money and will combine that with our report on our, the conduct of our half of the LAP program and be presenting that to the legislature. But in terms of the, the organizational structure, exactly where their oversight committee would be and, and who the staff would be reporting to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Tom?
Yeah, so just to follow up, back to the implication of Jason's question, I guess, what will the bar's role be in supervising use of these funds? I mean, obviously the purpose is to have CLA run its program independently, but I presume there's some, going to be some medium of accountability to the bar and we can change the contract in future years if we, if we're needed. Hopefully not, I hope it's going to thrive if it will, but that was definitely what I was asking for.
The thing that we envision, as you'll recall, starting, starting this year pursuant to statutory direction, $1 of the $10 LAP fees, licensing fees that are collected for LAP are transferred to the other bar. And as part of that statutory construct, there was reporting language that was put in, that the other bar would need to report to us on, on the modality of treatment that they used for the, for those funds, what expenses they, they had, how much reserves they had, et cetera. Giving us some information to make sure that this, it continues to be an appropriate use of licensing fees. I would expect that the same kind of reporting would come from the California Lawyers Association because we have to be responsible for the use of those, of those fees. And so that's what I would envision drafting into the statute, that they would be responsible for, for providing us that ongoing report so we can ascertain that this, that they are not similarly building up the same reserve that we did because of the lack of utilization, right? That's why we haven't had the significant reserve that we did, because we couldn't attract the lawyers to the program. And we would want to make sure that they are not just building up that reserve, unable to attract the people to the program and yet continue to provide them funding.
Okay. We want to turn to the next topic, Donna?
Yes. So the next topic is the adoption of the rule proposals that went out for public comment. First was a rule proposal on dealing with the committee of bar examiners and the office of admissions. Simply put, the changes to the rules were made to properly reflect the role of the committee versus the role of state bar staff, consistent with the direction of the board to provide that staff is responsible, would be responsible for conducting informal conferences as part of the moral character determinations, no longer having the committee of bar examiners responsible for those conferences, but having an appeal or review process that, that the committee would be responsible for, for those who the staff determined did not meet the requirements for, for moral character. The amendment also clarified the staff responsibility as opposed to the committee responsibility for issuing notices of violation of conduct requirements at the bar exam. For example, you brought yourself on into the bar exam when you're not allowed. Of course, the way we know that is because it went off during the exam or disturbed exam takers. We received one public comment with regard to this particular proposal. It's from a current committee of bar examiners member. Attached to your materials and attachment D, I put together a summary of the comments and a staff response to, to each of the comments. We do not propose changes to the comments, changes to the rules based on the comments that we receive. I can either move on to the next rule proposal or take questions this time.
Just take some questions. Anyone have anything on this topic? Go ahead.
Okay. Next slide, next rule proposal, California Board of Legal Specialization. In short, the rules reduce the size of the board from 15 members to 10, to seven members, consistent with the board direction on committee size and defaulting to seven members. Eliminates the references to the advisory commissions. As you'll recall, the, the California Board of Legal Specialization had 11 advisory commissions of nine members each for each of the special, specialty specialization areas, making it overall about 114 number group. So we're eliminating the references to the advisory commissions as those have been eliminated and we're replacing it as appropriate with references to, to working groups. We will be putting together working groups of subject matter experts, small working groups as necessary on an ad hoc basis to address some of the, a couple of the issues that were handled by the advisory commissions in the past. Also, the amendments again properly reflect the role of the committee vis a vis the role of staff, consistent with the direction from the board. We received one public comment, it was actually a joint comment that was comprised of a couple of individuals from the California Board of Legal Specialization, as well as a couple of comments from the, the board itself. As you'll see in attachment F, I have the memo to the board from the committee identifying their, their comments. And following that is a summary of those comments with the staff rationale for not, not thinking that any changes are needed to address those comments. In large part, the comments are suggesting a level of detail that is not appropriate for the rules, specifically minimum size and geographic and other diversity of the working groups. And working groups are more, so we're developing them on an ad hoc basis. They will be for different purposes. Some may require two members, some may require four or five members. Putting something like that in rule just didn't seem to make a lot of sense. And so we're not recommending any changes to the rules pursuant to that comment.
Any questions? I remember when this first came up and the entire room was filled with five legal specialists. Can you refresh us on the now oversight and reporting structure that's going to be in place with CVLS and the board?
So, so one of the, we, we had a, a very lengthy discussion at this September board meeting about whether legal specialization was a regulatory function, frankly, and whether it was something that should remain with the bar or not. The decision was yes, that this is appropriate to remain with the bar. So we maintain the committee, the California Board of Legal Specialization, who works with the Office of Admissions and reports up through the programs committee and the board. We have allocated some of the responsibilities of what the board and their advisory commissions did in the past. So for example, review of the applications for, for certification of a legal specialist. That application review is going to be done by staff now, not done by the committee. To the extent that there are specific questions about whether the prior experience attained is sufficient to meet the requirements, that would be the example of something that would go before a working group. But, but the, the Board of Legal Specialization will continue to exist. We will continue to develop exam, to deliver the specialization exams in the topic areas in which we do and, and the reporting structure will be through the programs committee and the board.
Okay. So the programs committee will be reporting to the board on how CVLS is doing?
To the extent they're reporting to the board on how the other committees are doing? Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would say, Jason, this is something that we are talking about more on the board management side, is creating a formalized structure by which each of the subentities does report to the board at least once a year, if that is purely through a written report on consent or an oral report with presentation. So that's sort of a gap right now in our processes, but we're, we'll be meeting on that soon and formalizing.
Okay. And we're going to have discussion on the next governance in the interest, public, in the public interest. So this might be something just to plan to see there, left to consider in the next round. Thanks, Donna. Go ahead.
Donna, as I recall, the advisory committees used to look at the subject matter, the particular area of specialization and make recommendations for the, for questions to be asked and so the preparation of the test and so forth. How is that function going to be handled now?
So, so we have a, we have a good model and that's what we use for the California Bar Exam, where we have, we have individuals that we pay to review and develop bar examination questions. They pre-test the questions. We have a team, our edge team, that, that does the grading of the questions as well. We are following that model for the Board of Legal Specialization. We will have professional question developers develop the questions or paid question developers develop the questions and do, do the pre-testing and the grading. We've certainly encouraged members of the advisory commissions, if they are interested in participating in the development of questions or the grading or the pre-testing or, or sort of anything else that used to be done by the advisory commissions that would now be done by work groups. We have, we have reached out to everyone and asked them to, to give us their names so we can reach out to them, so we don't lose that expertise in their particular subject matters. But we are, we're going to be following the same process that we do with the bar exam. The same way that we are looking at, we're going to be contracting with a psychometrician to look at the, the grading process for the California Bar Exam. They will also be looking at the grading process for the legal specialization examinations. We want to employ the same rigor for the bar examination, for the legal specialization examinations that we do for the bar exam.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is he done?
Next slide. These were rules that we put out for public comment regarding the Committee on Mandatory Fee Arbitration, very minimal proposal that was needed to the rules because the program itself does not change, but we are eliminating a reference to the mandatory fee arbitration committee, which is sunsetting at the end of June. As you heard Andrew Tough talk about to RAD yesterday, some of the work of the committee will be rolling into, into the work of COVID. And we received no public comments on that proposal.
Any questions?
Okay. The next rule proposal was on the client security fund commission. This proposal was to reduce the size of the commission from seven members to five members to provide the staff the authority to issue tentative decisions with the CSF commission, hearing objections or appeals of, of objections to the tentative decisions that are issued by staff. We received one public comment. I've attached a summary of that comment as attachment I to your materials. The public comment, though styled as relating to the CSF commission and a couple of other things, really was, wasn't, was completely unrelated to substance. And that's it for those rule proposals.
Well done. Any...
I've got one more topic.
I was just getting any questions.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
My final topic for you today is the accreditation of the online JD programs. The board initially approved a proposal, the proposal for online JD programs, this is not typo, in November of 2017. At the time, the board was presented with a combined package of rule guideline and statutory changes that included not just online accreditation, but also it was actually, the package required, included language that would mandate accreditation, so elimination of the, of the register of the unaccredited schools and also create this path to accreditation for those online programs. The mandatory accreditation part of that proposal required statutory change and we have not yet received a fully receptive audience to those changes. We have continued to talk to the law schools and the board about the online, the need for moving forward with the online accreditation. In the January 2019 board meeting, we presented to all of you proposals regarding law school engagement and accreditation. As part of your... As part of your decisions on accreditation, you, the action that you took required recognition of regional and national accreditation, directed staff to continue to try to pursue mandatory accreditation, and also directed that we bifurcate the accreditation of online programs from mandatory accreditation, such that an accreditation process for online programs can be implemented immediately under the rules and guidelines that were previously adopted by the board. So that's what I am bringing to you today, those rules and guidelines that were previously adopted by the board for online accreditation. Because what we approved before was a combined package, staff felt that it was prudent to have you formally adopt the standalone tease apart rules that are just dealing with the online accreditation. And that's my, my presentation.
Any questions on this topic? Brennan?
Donna, were there any changes made to the rules other than what has been discussed previously?
No, so those we just, we just literally teased them apart. There are a couple of grammatical changes that we would like to make, but we didn't even want to go there. We wanted to tease them apart. And as one of the, one of the first biggest projects for our new committee of unaccredited and registered schools is to go through the accreditation guideline. And as part of that process, we'll make those grammatical tweaks as necessary to the online ones.
Any other questions? Donna, you, I think you said something in your initial presentation on this subject about not yet attaining critical mass to the intended audience for this subject. Am I?
About mandatory accreditation.
This is about moving to mandatory accreditation and the receptivity in the legislature.
Okay, got it. So it's still in discussions?
Yes.
Okay.
Understood.
We will continue to pursue that.
It was a nice turn of phrase. I wanted to understand that a little more.
That's a good turn you made.
I know. I was like. Okay, so what are, I guess we're going to have some resolutions up?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
The resolutions are listed in the agenda item. It's a package. And I would move that package as a resolution. And just add, thank God, we're finally getting that. Finally.
Hold on a second.
Do I know? Motion? Brennan with a second. Getting for the discussion. And I substitute rule call if I can. Any objections? Okay, you have the call.
Thank you.
Right, we'll move on to item 702, which is the receipt of the 2019 biannual state audit report and feedback on the 2020 funding needs. That Leah and John?
All right, I think I'm ready. I apologize for that.
Take a good wait, Donna.
Good morning, everyone. John Adams, your chief financial officer. So today, I am just presenting the key findings of the state audit report that was completed and filed with the legislature, I believe, April 30th. Let's see there. The report 2018-030. Scope of audit. So just, just a little bit of background. Part of last year's fee bill actually identified the scope of this, defined the scope of the audit that was completed. And you can see these are the six areas that they were looking at. Our current use of resources, our performance metric, our measures and metrics that have been recently implemented, our use of real estate. So specifically this building and how we're leasing the property out. They looked at our cost allocation plan and that policy, which the board adopted in March. They also looked at our five-year forecast and the proposal that the state bar has made related to additional, a fee increase for our additional needs. And then finally, they actually were responsible for calculating what revenue the state bar would need to have in order to meet its public protection mission. So with that, here are the auditors' recommendations. So the state auditor in their report identified, did the calculations, and here are their recommendations. So a $71 increase for 2020, the annual ongoing licensing fee. So that would take from 308, the benefits of the general fund, up to 379. They also, also recommended in their report a $40 increase in the client security. The one, or a special assessment for technology of $22, a capital assessment of $16, a reserve assessment for $3, which is to work towards the 17% reserve policy that the board has. And then as Donna had mentioned earlier about the LAP, they actually recommended a fee holiday for 2020. So I did talk about the state bar's funding need and part of the five-year forecast. So I'm just going to do a quick comparison to show you the difference, or the comparison between the state bar funding needs and the state auditor. So state bar identified an ongoing funding need of $100. State auditor's recommendation is actually $71. And just I want to highlight really the main difference there is that they, in their recommendation, really recommended a phased approach in the implementation of 58 positions at OCTC based on the 2018 workload study. So they actually recommended one team, which is 19 positions for OCTC. And so that's really the main difference between the $100 and the $71. Related to client security, state bar identified a one-time need of $80. They recommended $40, not because of the calculation, but they felt that we would get an increase in 2020, a potential increase in 2021, as we did the $80 one time to support all the liability and client security. And then LAP, as I mentioned earlier, they recommend a holiday. We suggest to continue that and postpone that decision. Next, just quickly, this is really where there's some significant differences. Not necessarily dollar amounts or projects, but we identified a one-time assessment for five years that would be paid in 2020. The state auditor, part of the recommendation was a multi-year fee bill approach. So they're really breaking out into dollars per year. But this just shows you the comparison for technology. We identified a need of $82. The state auditor recommended a total need of $65. So they substantially supported most of our project's capital. We identified 134. There was one large project out there in the fifth year of $14 million, which really represented over half of the 134. Their overall recommendation was only $30. And then reserves, we identified a one-time need to build reserves back up to 17%. They believe in a one-time, or an annual assessment to grow the reserve 1% per year. And so the first year, the recommendation is $3. This is just really simply the comparison of our current fee to what the state auditor is recommending. As you can see, the current mandatory fee component for the license fee is 383. They're actually recommending, with the assessments, 525. And this just summarizes what I just went over. Just briefly on IT and capital projects. I'm showing you a one-time fee that the state bar identified, which was a total of $216. Their overall recommendation for the five-year period is $95. They recommended $38 in the first year. I won't go through all of these, but these are the projects that they actually recommended. A little discussion yesterday about our ERP. This was, as you can see, the second one that they actually recommend the state bar proceeded with. The third one is our licensing management system, which is over 20 years old, which is one of the larger projects out there. Which they also recommended. That is a little over $13 million. Technology projects that they didn't identify. Certainly these are the state bar. And I'll give you a great example is our AS400 application. The AS400 is actually managing our CSF program. So all of the data for our CSF program is maintained in that. And that's a critical program with state bar, but something that needs to be replaced. But these are the projects that they did not recommend at this time for funding. This is our capital, and I won't go into detail, but there was two things on capital. They didn't recommend certain projects. And they actually had an expert, a consultant come in and do price estimates. And so when you look at that five-year cost, the state bar made estimates. Their consultant made their own estimates. So our estimates were a little over $8 million. Their consultant recommended over $6 million. I think what's really key here is, at the end of the day, all these projects would go out to public bid, and ultimately the price would be based on what those bids are. These were the three projects that they did not approve as part of the capital plan. Really, the big one is at the bottom, and that's the re-cladding of this building that was in year five. On top of the fee bill recommendations, they actually had, well, they had two other recommendations outside of the actual dollar amounts. One, there's a lot of discussion just for the state bar to maximize revenue specifically in both its leasing of property here and the use of the buildings. The other one is, and I think this is what the real important thing looking out at the recommendation is, they recommend a multi-year fee bill cycle. Their recommendation is three years. And that cycle, which they spent a lot of time discussing. Let's see if I can go to it. All right. It just talks about the, the cycle that other regulatory bodies are doing with the Department of Consumer Affairs. And so they're recommending something very similar. They're saying three years. And really would provide some long-term stability for the state bar. So with that, I, I'm certainly available for any questions. Really is no forward recommendation or resolution, so.
Thanks, John. Any questions relating to the state auditor report or the presentation?
I just want to make a comment that, as we've discussed previously, we really sort of welcome the recommendations of the state auditor and support them wholeheartedly. But it is really important to understand that context within which they are offered is a multi-year fee bill and the opportunity to come back at standardized intervals to seek additional funding, both for one-time types of assessments as well as increases to the annual licensing fee. So for example, with the re-cladding of this building, I think it's entirely appropriate to not recommend funding that perhaps in the short term. But eventually, we will need to re-cladd this building. And so we need to have that confidence that we will be able to come back in a reasonable amount of time and seek the funding for that particular initiative and others. So I think that, just to read it, the importance of the auditor's recommendation is that holistic approach, not just on the 2020 amounts that have been approved, but the entirety of the package, which includes multi-year funding.
Any questions relating to that? I think it's important to sort of parse out what will happen if the state auditor's recommendations, let's say, adopt wholesale by the legislature, which is this 2020 is going to be a one-time fee increase of the 500 number that we saw. And then next year will be the multi, the proposal for multi-year fee cycles. So that will put us into a three-year process that has, gives us a range then to ascertain the changing fiscal needs of the organization. So that's sort of what the state auditor has recommended that the legislature do in terms of our funding. So it's, if you think about it, it's sort of four years out with decisions to be made this year, and then a big decision, I think, to be made the following.
Jason, is there going to be a substantial interruption of services? I guess if we get into that, if the legislature approves it and we get into that, that multi-year approach?
A substantial interruption? No, I think it will lend, if I'm hearing your question correctly, it will lend a level of unprecedented stability to the state bar's funding. Remember, we did the, the five-year plan, the importance of the impact of adopting that budget for this year, and then its impact throughout the rest of the remaining years. And it was a dire situation that could ultimately impact our staffing levels at the organization. So what the state auditor has now recommended is that three-year package for next year, where we can then have a lot of visibility with the board's oversight as to the agency's spend, particularly on employees, particularly on any unforeseen projects that will require our attention. And also, as you mentioned, a, a type of funding cycle that is, that applies to a lot of other licensing agencies.
And I would say the interruption, that concern really relates to the idea that the legislature, for example, would advance the auditor's recommendations for 2020 only. Then you have a very significant issue with respect to the IT and capital, which would be only very partially funded.
So if there was a wholesale adoption of the auditor's recommendation, to do just one particular portion, that would promote stability throughout the bar and for the constituents?
Renee?
I guess, sorry, to that point, I didn't understand their, the recommendation around the IT projects were pretty right. I didn't really understand their point, other than you're trying to do too much, so push some of this off. But one thing about not migrating the remaining AS400 applications, I think, how does that work? Because aren't we like shutting that whole system down?
At some point, it's going to be difficult to maintain stuff like that.
But we're, I mean, that was why we had to move the case management system. So now you've got this kind of like disaster, this really old decrepit system that you can't invite terminals for anymore. Maintaining a few legacy systems? That just seems like an even, you know, worse idea than trying to get it removed.
And I think we, we would agree. I mean, I, I'm not that many people aren't here, but certainly Steve and I would agree that that's the case. I, you know, I think in talking to them and really trying to find out why they felt that way, they just didn't see it maybe as critical, even though I think everything on there is a high priority. They just didn't see it as, you know, as critical. And that was their rationale, not.
Just so inefficient to be moving, that's probably 80% of the stuff off it and having to maintain it for just a little bit.
Agreed, agreed. And using the CSF program as an example of a program that we manage that is still on the AS400, so.
I guess there's no better answer, right?
Well, I think the, the answer, and this is what Leah, myself, and Alan have been telling the folks that we've met with relating to the potential disconnect with the state bar's identification of its funding needs and what the state auditor has proposed. So, you know, we identify, given that we've never had a increase for 20 years, all the objects that required funding.
Yeah.
Really that needed an intention with the idea that we may not get another increase for 20 years. What the state auditor did. What the state auditor did, and Sean, they told me, you know, interrupted by, I'm sort of getting this wrong, but my view is what the state auditor is, they adopted a rational world of sustainable funding. And for the projects that they thought didn't require attention immediately within that four-year cycle I described, they just said, look, you can put that off and then use the money to tackle the priority projects first. But now that you have this three-year cycle, the board can take these projects one-on-one. If, for example, bricks start falling off the building in year two, we can decide, look, the licensees need to fund that piece and address it. So I think that's where the state auditor is coming from.
Yeah, I understood it. I understood that. This particular one just struck me as odd.
Yeah, no, even, you know, the AS400 system, 300 system is something that is like this looming shadow of the agency for like the last 20 years or so. Wouldn't you call it, Leah, like the green screen?
It is a green screen. You can't even buy, you can't buy, Jason was laughing, we can buy the, you know, Brandon was just saying we can, you know, borrow the terminals on eBay or something, you know, it's like...
I think they're like collector's items at this point.
It looks like Sony, and I should be able to couple them.
Remember, like, they went green screen, and then they did amber, because they thought amber was better for the guys.
It was before he was born.
Are there any other, any other questions?
It was a millennial.
Along those lines, my concern is the fact that the auditor didn't think we needed to upgrade seismic, you know, portions of the building. We all know the big, the next big one's like overdue, and so let's just allow the whole building to collapse instead. And we just go to the script. It doesn't make any sense to me. Seems very short-sighted. So I, but, you know, what can we do? I don't understand a lot of the meaning.
All right. This is, this is a, no actions needed here, purely informational. Thank you. So again, so at the request of our most seasoned trustee, I'm moving 703, which is the fee scaling discussion, to the last, she has a conflict. So we're going to start with the governance of the, what should be the last part. The governance in the public interest task force and discussion. Now.
Take it away.
All right. So we are now due for convening another task force. And as some of us in this room know, we've already gone through two. And sort of to quickly review this board card on that, and Sean and I were sort of reliving our experiences when I first got on the board. So we'll say, task force part one was, was a discussion deliberation on whether the bar should be a unified organization or whether there should be a split. Task force part two was, the bar is split. Now, how do we reorganize our agency to account for a regulatory function and oversight? We have now passed through, we'll say, task force part two, and it implemented a substantial amount of reforms. I think the staff and the trustees have been hard at work doing this. And we just saw sort of the tail end of the appendix I review, which Donna has sworn never to use appendix I ever again, you know, any attachment, any memo. But it was a, you know, directly, it was a very difficult process. We're not through it yet, but I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I think the agency is a, is a better run, better governed as a result. So now, let's talk about task force part three. And given really the amount of work that we put in, what is, what should be the focus of this task force? The, I think that we, although we've come a long way, there is a lot to be extracted now. I think I mentioned, the oversight of the board is even more critical. The balancing between the resources that we have available to us with fewer trustees, the appointment process of our varying agency, varying governmental bodies, the interplay with those different branches of government, and this sort of the evolution of the sub-entities and the reporting structures, now also with the staff being heavily involved in that process as well. So with that, I think we should have a focused discussion on what we should, we should be doing. Because I don't think we should be, we'll say, sitting back and letting these things take hold. I think we need to control the pace of the next three years. Brandon?
So I think to your point, I think a portion of this task force should focus on the intended or unintended consequences of the different actions and to see how the appendix I review and sub-entities, just how all that interrelates in the practical, real world, and then see how, you know, if it's better or worse, if there's things that we can fine-tune, if there's recommendations that we can make now that those big, tough decisions have been made. If there's way to be a little more nuanced if necessary. But I think that those nuanced decisions or changes will only come through, you know, a deep dive into how this works just in the practical world.
Any actions, Joanna?
I'm not convinced that we've looked at everything that the bar does with respect to its sub-entities to determine if they are regulatory functions versus functions that are lined up with a trade association. And there, this definitely gets nuanced. It would give you a headache thinking too much about it. But the issuance of ethics opinions by the state bar, for example, has been, you know, there's, there's opinions out there that that's not an appropriate function for a regulatory agency. Whether or not that is, I don't know, but I think that might not be too far afield for what we might want to take a look at and hear what those opinions are and whether or not we should, in fact, be continuing to issue ethics opinions or not. And I'm not sure what else that we, that we do that might fall into that function, but we might, we might want to see what's left, what they're doing that would, in fact, be better served by a trade association.
Ellen?
I think the point of what the board should be doing is looking down five years down the road and envisioning what a perfectly functioning and operating governmental agency as ours should be doing and what the board should be doing at that point. So I think the framework is, what can we improve from here to there? And I think both Brandon's and Joanna's suggestions are good ones. I would throw in a couple of others that may or may not have any relevance, but might be an agenda item to at least discuss. One is, what about our board? Is it properly comprised? Do we have the right voices on the board? Are we doing the right things? Are board members being tasked to do too much hidden weeds kind of stuff, which we've been doing for quite a while because of the need to oversee the transformation of the, I would say, of this bar? Do we need to continue to do that, or should there be a better or a different role for the board that would be more effective three years from now, four years from now, five years from now? Second, we've gone through a number of efforts to, to develop metrics for assessing our effectiveness and the board's effectiveness. And I, I know that we, that Dag at one time was under, you know, taking under his responsibility a number of changes and coming up with metrics and so forth. And those metrics may be fine, I don't know. But I would certainly put on the agenda item, are there additional metrics or are there additional ways of evaluating our performance that would give us a better feel for how we're doing, number one, and a better way to explain what you're doing and to justify what we're doing to the legislature and other stakeholders? There are probably other things that would occur, but right now, looking at two things that come immediately.
Renee?
Sorry, a lot of, a lot of what Alan was just saying, it just triggered another thought, that you could also include kind of how the board functions. We are, we're sort of legislatively hamstrung with this, with the committee structure and how we have, you know, we spend a day with the committees. We've talked about all different ways to do that, but because of the bag with the keen, we end up doing things, I think, in a somewhat inefficient way. And I think that that is contrary to the idea of, you know, getting the people that you need onto the board, because it just becomes so un milty at times. So I would add that to the extent that we can make recommendations, not to say like, don't, you know, make a subject in bag with the keen, but here are some things that might need updating and where you might want to carve out some exceptions.
Joanna?
It's not a new idea for the group to be discussing. My question is more, this report's due next May, so a year from this month, is that right?
Yes.
So there's a very short timeframe for this governance in the public interest task force to be operating. Hasn't even started yet, hasn't been selected. We just don't want to bite off too much, because it's going to take a drain on those who serve on it, their time for the next year, so. I'm not really sure what the process is going forward. Do you have all those factors, right?
You mean the process operationally?
Yeah, you know, how we're, who's going to be on it? We haven't figured out yet how it's going to start, how it's going to turn, so. We can't start it today, so we're going to have less than a year to put it together.
Right. I imagine the process will be, will take the comments today, and there will be a proposal in July as to the makeup of the task force. Leah's looking at me as if, tell me if I'm off track here. And then we will, with the comments taken today, the head of that task force will then take on, I would imagine, the majority of the agenda making with the eye towards the comments that you made, which is, we have less than a year to do this work.
So the governance task force is supposed to be chaired by the chair of this board. Are we going to start it in September then, when the new chair comes on, so that we have one chair? Are we going to change chairs in the middle? The timing is very challenging for us. And there's a lot of, obviously, the issue of there's, currently has to be elected members on there, and Sean and I are going off the board as elected members in September, so there won't be any...
My suggestion is, first, I don't think it's particularly problematic to have the chair change, because especially, we don't, we don't know who's going to be chair, but I think there's been a really good job this year of making sure that there is sort of shared leadership among the board. So I don't see that as particularly problematic. In terms of the elected members, we are working on a statutory change, and I do think that issue will be addressed. I do want to add, in terms of the work, I think there's been a general agreement amongst those of us that have discussed it, that we've done quite a bit of work in this area over the last several years. And so the goal is not to create a scope of work that is really overwhelming here, but to do something manageable that I think realistically can get done in that timeframe, so.
Renee?
Yes. All right, to that point, I mean, I, well, I guess three of us were on the last one, right? I mean, it was just, it was, yeah, Joanna and Alan.
Mark.
Oh, Mark presented it too, right? So anyway, it was...
A lot of us certainly liked either part one or part two.
It was an overwhelming amount of work and extra work. And so, but I also don't know, we were in, we were in a pretty bad, pretty serious crisis at that point. So I don't know that, I don't know that it's required that the scope be, you know, anywhere near as broad. I think you could make it fairly narrow. And the other thing is, you know, we didn't necessarily resolve everything there, right? We ended up with a set of recommendations that needed further work. And I think we can still, you know, do that within the timeframe. So I don't, you know, I don't know that it's going to need to meet, but we met like, what, five times for two days? I mean, it was, per time, it was crazy. So I don't see that as being really quite as necessary.
Josh?
Yeah, I mean, I think Leah's comments are pretty important here, because, look, in the time that I've been on and watching what this board's done before I got here and then continued, I think a lot has been accomplished. It is very difficult, and I think there are a lot of governmental agencies and quasi-governmental agencies that are dealing with legacy systems and rules and regulations and programs that are not always as important today as they were when they were implemented. And so I think a big piece of it is what has been accomplished and almost a framework of how we got to where we are. And then with that, some, obviously, some recommendations to continue to improve, and continuous improvement is a big part of it. But I don't know that we need to start from, from scratch. I think people should take a lot of, I think they should be proud of what they've accomplished, and we should lay that out in the task force.
Uh, Mark and then Joanna?
Yes. Having been on that task force, I somewhat cringe a little bit when I hear the term "task force" again.
My PTSD.
Yeah, it was an enormous amount of work. But as you pointed out initially, there were, on both task forces, I was only on the second one, there was a clear purpose and a need that was directed in all of those. And I don't get that sense right now that we have a clear goal as to why we want to establish a task force. I would, I would offer up something along these lines, which I think sort of goes along with Josh, is how well does our new state bar and our new structure meet or support or align with our mission statement, which was also part of the task force in defining what our goal was? Sort of an assessment of what we've done in the past, and then make possibly some suggestions as to what changes or adjustments might be made would be something that a, either a task force or a working group could do to assess where we are and what we need to do in the future. But somewhat goes along with what Alan said. But I don't think we need a task force unless we have a clearly defined mission, if you will, on that. So that's what I would do.
And Mark, and now to Joanna. The reason why this is happening is we have a statutory mandate to do the task force.
Every year.
Every, every year. And so that is the reason why. But I also think we shouldn't let the opportunity pass, given that we do have to staff it and resources, and it's worthwhile to do many. I mean, we, I think these are a lot of great ideas and useful to summarize a lot of what's been discussed. But that, so that's the reason why we're doing it. Joanna?
Just to make the job easier and not take as much time. It seems to me, anything that would require a real deep level of analysis to determine what we should be doing next, might be better just recognize as something we need to do and identify the appropriate board committee that would be doing that upon the recommendation of the task force. So the task force itself is not taking on too much work.
Sean?
Well, this is an interesting discussion. I'm having deja vu, I don't, not PTSD, second task force was quite meaty. It does occur to me that a lot of what we studied and ultimately recommended on the second task force involved changing... second task force involved changing or eliminating existing structures and sort of reorganizing what's here, and this new task force might consider thinking about some of the new innovative initiatives that we've been talking about, the changes in the probation system as an example, AI use, and so we, already our staff is looking at this in detail and it is coming before committees, but perhaps if we have this dedicated group, they might look at themselves as an innovation community, as opposed to, you know, sort of reforming and restructuring what we had before, so you might take it on a more affirmative step going forward, so just a thought, I think it's really for the people in that group to think about it, but might have a slightly different vision, given how much change has already taken place in the organization.
Are there some statutory requirements for this?
Well, it's pretty, I was just looking at that, it's pretty broad, I can pull it up again, while I, while I'm doing that, I would just sort of follow, follow on Sean's comments that I have been thinking about the Technology Task Force and the regu, the recommendations that may be forthcoming from that body, which would suggest some real changes in our regulatory structure, talking about things like entity regulation and whole many changes to the rules, but the entity regulation piece of it being quite different from our current model, and that, when you think about governance broadly and the sort of the structure of your organization as a regulatory body, that really ties, ties to that. Those, those recommendations are going to be formally coming to the Board in December, so there may be a timing issue, but, but it really does relate to what you're saying, Sean, in terms of the state bar of the future, not just sort of looking backwards at where we've been, let me pull up the, the statute because I wasn't looking at that.
Leah, while you're pulling that up, I think a draft of those recommendations will be ready though long before December.
Right.
Enough to start working with, and we're, we're supposed to have our draft recommendations done in June to go out to public comment, so it's, there's a, and then during the ABA meeting in August, which is here in San Francisco, we're doing public hearings to get more feedback from the legal community on what those recommendations are, so there's going to be a lot of vetting and there are a lot of work already accomplished before September.
Hyland?
So to the extent we do a sort of backward-looking review, and I really like Sean's idea of forward-looking innovation, one thing that might be useful is to look at whether we do have the structures and processes and the institutionalization of reforms in place such that if all of us disappeared, right, all the people who worked on the first and second task forces, you know, people who don't have that institutional knowledge and commitment, if we just changed people, if that would still be in place?
Let me read the, the statute here, the relevant part, so. Every three years, the task force shall submit a report that includes its recommendations for enhancing the protection of the public and ensuring that protection of the public is the highest priority in the licensing, regulation, and discipline of attorneys. That's it. The task force can also make suggestions to the Board regarding additions to or revisions of the strategic plan.
Riven?
So Hyland just mentioned if everyone who was involved in those first two task forces up and left the state and, and who would, you know, who would continue to move forward, I sort of, I came into this at the very end of that second phase, right, that you're describing, and I'm so, I'm so, so one of the people that you're talking about, like, you know, I have the commitment, but I don't have the knowledge, and in the seven or eight months that I've been here, what I've gathered from the process is that the first two phases were internally focused necessarily, right? Governance and how the organization had this task that was challenging and how it's going to, oh, we're going to reform ourselves in the interest of the pub, in the interest of the public, but also like to deal with the, the scrutinization, scrutiny we're getting from the legislature, so it seems to me like this third phase really is about now an external focus, right, and that is how we are serving the public through making sure that our licensees get what they need by way of regulation and support, and then by virtue of that, how is the public being served by better, you know, a better crop of lawyers who have good regulatory systems and know what their job is and how to serve the public, so, I don't know, I think what I hear is this next phase should be focusing on our external activity and, and innovation as well as what Sean said, so, I mean, that's just the way I'm seeing it, and I'm not sure if that's a good take or not. Shift in focus, essentially.
Right, so these are all great comments, I think it would be worthwhile exercise to go over what we've done very, really quickly, I don't think we need to take, I mean, sort of, one and two, what was the result, where we are? But with all the labor that we've put in, I think we're well positioned to think now much more long-term, to ask the questions, what does it mean to protect the public five years down the line? What are we seeing as changes in the professions and changes in the state and the population that the lawyers are serving, how is that changing? What are the progress areas? What are the ways the profession can engage that changing demographic? Wrapping in the work that's already being done in technology, I think that's what we should spend most of our time on, to more, as Alan, to Alan's point, more of a long-term perspective on where the state bar fits in in the next five years. Okay? Any other further comments? All right, thank you, everyone. So let's move on to the last part of the agenda, which is item 703, fee scaling options. Oh, hang on, why don't we take a, since we've been going, sorry, let's take a quick break, five minutes.
To lessen the impact of an increase in the fees for nonprofit attorneys and for lower-income attorneys, which of course for our community, lower income means under $90,000 a year, so I just wanted to support the proposal and, and state that I really appreciate that the Board of Trustees has engaged so thoughtfully in this and how to lessen the impact for attorneys who may be paying their own dues or also those organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone that wishes to make a comment on this agenda item? Please go. All right, with none, please proceed. Thank you.
I'm with the CATS with the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability, presenting along with John Adams this agenda item. At the March meeting, the Board rejected the idea of determining a new income limit for fee scaling based on a Consumer Price Index adjustment to the current income limit of $40,000, since no clear rationale was determined as to how that number was originally arrived at. The Board directed staff to identify moderate or middle income, middle-class income as a basis for fee scaling, and in addition to researching this topic, staff investigated fee scaling practices for attorneys in other states as well as those of licensing boards for other California professionals. I'm going to present information regarding fee reductions provided in other states and California, like professional licensing boards, options for determining new income limits, and whether fee scaling should be expanded beyond income considerations, and John will discuss the impact in terms of the actual increased licensing fees that would be paid based on the options that are selected. In researching licensing fees in other states, I found that California offers reduced licensing fees similar to most other states. Only three other states provide for reduced fees based on specified income levels. Minnesota attorneys with yearly gross income less than $25,000 pay $200 as opposed to $248, which is an 11% reduction. Connecticut attorneys pay an occupational licensing fees to the State Department of Revenue Services as opposed to a specific licensing fee to a regulatory agency, and that fee is waived if income from their legal practice is less than $1,000. And fees are waived entirely for Washington attorneys whose household income is less than or equal to 200% of the federal poverty level, but this waiver is only available for one year. The exceptions are that, in terms of what's offered in other states and not in California, is that California does not offer reduced fees for attorneys in their first few years of admission, nor for attorneys serving active-duty military, although fees are waived for reservists who are called reservists. Fee reductions based on income are not provided to doctors, dentists, or nurses in California, which are considered the comparable professionals for the purposes of analysis.
The system has detected that a minimum number of lines are connected to this conference. Do you want to continue your meeting? Press 1 to confirm. If there is no response, the conference will end.
So now we're going to look at the different ways to determine moderate or middle-class income. On this table, the first two columns show the average household size and median household income for the state as a whole, as well as for three metropolitan areas from the 2013 to 2017 American Community Survey conducted by the U.S. Census Bureau. The third column is a calculation of the middle-class income range based on median household income. This calculation uses the Pew Research Center's definition of middle-class households as those with 2/3 to double the median household income. This is a widely cited standard definition, and all the research into middle-class income points to this Pew definition. The American Community Survey figures for actual reported income with no regional cost of living adjustments, and the reason why these areas were selected is that the San Jose, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara region has the highest median income, Los Angeles, Long Beach, and Anaheim has the greatest number of households, and the San Francisco-Hopland-Hayward area has the second highest number of households and the second highest median income. This next table shows the range of middle-class income for different household sizes based on the Pew Research Center's analysis. The Pew's analysis is more nuanced, it's adjusted for both household size and cost of living in the specific metropolitan area. And this final table shows the California Department of Housing and Community Development's moderate income limits based on household size for the counties that correspond with the metropolitan areas of the previous two tables. Housing Community Development uses this limit to determine eligibility for certain housing-related programs, but they do not provide a statewide information because all of the programs are provided at the county level. Based on this analysis, the staff recommendation is to base eligibility for fee scaling on individual income using the Pew definition of a middle-class household of one at the state level. As adopted, an attorney whose income falls below $90,000 would qualify for fee scaling, providing reduced fees for attorneys considered middle-class or below. So is that clear? Any questions about how this recommendation's developed?
I have a question, Jason.
Yes.
So why, why the choice of a one-person household as opposed to another number?
Well, the, there is an option on the next slide, doing it by household, but it gets very complicated, because unless we're going to look at, set limits for multiple household sizes, then we have to pick one, and that's what's suggested on the next slide as an option, but there are drawbacks to that option.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I'll discuss. So this alternative option is to base eligibility on household income, and if selected, the recommendation would just go with a household size of three, that's the average household size in California, and you can do a combination of individual households, so you could say those with a household of, of, I'm sorry, that those, the individual income of $90,000 or a household income of less than $155,000 would qualify, or you could say individual income of $90,000 and a household income of $155,000. But if you're using, if you select only one household size, then those with a household of one or two would have, be at an advantage, because they would, anybody under that $155,000 would qualify, whereas larger households would still have to come under that $155,000. And I think it gets to be really cumbersome if you set a maximum income, household income for households of four, five, six, although that could also be done, but the recommendation is to just simplify it and not look at household income, but just look at the individual attorney income.
Another issue that you'll see later on in the presentation is that we do have the ability to estimate the number of attorneys with an individual income at a certain level or less or greater than, we don't have any way to estimate on the household. So when John gets into the modeling of what the impact of application of the scaling approach that you adopt is, we can model it based on individual income, we have no way to model it based on household, because that's not information that we've asked attorneys to provide to us in the past, so you'll, you'll see that going forward.
So then the next question is whether eligibility for fee scaling should expand beyond just higher income levels. There was a suggestion that we include nonprofits right now, only nonprofit programs that receive IELTS funding are eligible. Only nonprofit programs that receive IOLTA funding are eligible for fee scaling. So there's been a suggestion to expand beyond those to other nonprofits. And if the Board did want to expand beyond those nonprofits, the question is whether it would go to, what types of nonprofits? Whether it would be limited to 501(c)(3)'s or if it could go to all nonprofits. And just in case people aren't familiar with the specifics of the tax code, 501(c)(3)'s are charitable organizations and foundations. And other types of nonprofits are credit unions, social advocacy groups, trade and professional associations like bar associations, social clubs, retirement fund associations, and cemeteries. Those are all different types of nonprofits. And that's why the suggestion is that we want to limit it to the 501(c)(3) groups. But even within the 501(c)(3) groups, would we want to expand to all 501(c)(3)'s or only those that provide legal services? And further granularity, you know, ask the question, would it only be those that provide directly the services to clients? And then within that group, would we want to provide it only to the attorneys within the organization that provide those direct legal services? Would we want to expand it to the attorneys who supervise the attorneys that provide direct legal services or to all attorneys in an organization? For example, there are organizations like the ACLU that have an advocacy and lobbying side, and then they also provide direct legal services. So where would that scaling be offered? So that's something for the Board to consider in terms of this question. And in terms of the active military duty, as I, the early slides showed, currently nine states offer reduced or waive fees for attorneys serving active military duty. The ARB rules provide for, waiver for attorneys who are reservists, who aren't regularly in active duty but are on reserve and are called to active duty. But we do not waive fees for attorneys who are regular active-duty military. So that's another area that we want to, by want to consider. And now I'm going to turn over the rest of the presentation to John, who'll discuss the impact of the fee scaling options on the actual amount of the fee increase.
So the Board has seen this slide before. It just gives you a context of how many people are currently scaling. So at the 50% scaling, which is based on the $20,000 per household, we only have about 200 people that scale less than 0.1%. The 25%, which is the $40,000 annually individual income, last 2016, or 2018, we had $9,100. This number has actually been declining. If you looked at the four-year average, it was over $10,000. And then as far as IOTA, Legal Aid Attorney, 809 active licenses scaled. I do want to clarify just for IOTA, the way that we handle IOTA is it's when the firm or the nonprofit actually pays. So when we send out invoices or billings to them, it's them paying. And that's how we, when they pay for an attorney who's an IOTA attorney. So it's not an individual who claims to be an IOTA. It is the IOTA firm that is paying for their bar fees or, yeah, their license fees directly. So it's not someone claiming to work for IOTA. It's actually the firm or the nonprofit. So just quickly, this is the current, if you took the current methodology, which is just the 25% or the 50%, and we look at the $100, which is the state bar's funding need, each of them would have a 30% increase. So even for those that are under $20,000, they would see a $50 increase because they would be scaling 50% of the $100. And then those that are under 40, they would see a $75 increase. And those above $40,000 would see $100. If we based it on the state auditor's recommendation of $71, you would have across the board a 21% increase and so forth. You see the numbers there, $35, $53, and then $71 for those above. And so the concern is, is with this, certainly this large increase, whether it's the state auditors or the bars need of funding, this does and will impact those individuals under that, under those numbers. So talking about data and really the difficulty of modeling this and getting back to the household is we do have some data on individual income for attorneys, either based on the 2017 five-year survey of all licensed attorneys or more recent demographic information related to the state bar profile. So just going over this, 2017, and really when I show you the next slide, you'll see how the numbers break out. But 4.4% identified them as working for nonprofits. 17.4% of attorneys identified them making between $40,000 and $90,000. I don't know if you, and I should have called it out on the prior slide. When I showed you the number of people that are currently eligible for scaling, it's 5% of licensees that are currently scaling. So when you look at increasing up to the $90,000, you're increasing it 17%. So you're increasing it threefold of the people who would be eligible for scaling. Going back to the state bar profile, the demographic data that was recently done, for, you know, keeping the data relatively consistent, 4% said that they work for nonprofits, which just sort of supports the 2017 five-year survey. The one thing we do not know is how many people are currently in active military service. So based on that information, the modeling that we did, and again, based on individual income, what we're showing you is in the first grouping, maintaining, and I should say that this modeling is really holding people harmless. So when you talk about specific interest groups or specific groups of attorneys, we're holding the people under the $40,000 or under the $20,000 or IOTA, you know, at the same rate as they are currently paying. There's no increase at all. And then you can see that if we added military or the nonprofits that are outside of IOTA, we would keep the same $333 now and then those between 40 and 90. Based on holding this, these groups without a fee increase, the increase based on $100 would have to be $134 for everyone that's above $90,000. Again, if you take what the state auditor's recommendation is related to fee increase, that increase for those above $90,000 that don't fit within any of those groups would be $95. Any questions on this slide? I mean, it's relative, you're just taking the information. And as I said earlier, currently about 5% are scaling. If you include the additional groups, you're talking closer to 25%. So 1 in 4 attorneys would be eligible for scaling.
John?
John, maybe you cover this. I just, and I just missed it. Do you have an idea of the, I saw the percentage breakdown on the slides before, but for instance, the largest increase under the scenario, no, you can say the largest, thank you. Largest increase in the scenario is the under $20,000 households. What are we talking in numbers or percentage in that?
Yes, let me go back to that, and I should have spent one more time. So, you know, we, and when we talk about the 50, we're only talking 0.1% that are under.
Under 8%.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, so very, and again, this is household. So that even further narrows it. It's a various small percentage. But you see the $9,000 on the 25%. And so you can see that total right now is about 5, again, 5% of attorneys are currently scaling. And that's the, the impact, the million dollars. So again, when you go back and look at this slide, you know, based on the five-year survey, 17% said that they made between 40 and 90. And so, you know, with that and the expansion on nonprofits, potentially anywhere between 17 and 21% of you're adding to those that are scaling. So you're talking going from 5% to 25%.
And I don't, I don't believe you modeled this in the slides, John, but the same percentage, percentages would apply to the one-time assessments, either the state auditor recommended or are identified needs. So you would apply the 40% differential or the 30% differential based on mitigating the impact for those under the $90,000 cap. And this is what I was referring to, Reuben, earlier. We're not able to do the same kind of modeling at the 155 or for any household, frankly, other than the $20,000 because that is the one place where we are collecting household information.
John, I'm just trying to understand. One more question. So on your, in the nonprofit bucket, do you have any idea how many of those folks fall in the under $90,000 range?
So that, that 17.4% that were between 40 and 90, that was exclusive of the nonprofits. So we took those out. So there's not the overlap.
How much overlap was there?
About 2%.
Let me move on. I only have two more slides. And really, just, there was some discussion at the March Board meeting about income and what is defined as income and how do we, how do we define that when evaluating whether or not someone is under the $90,000? So currently, the way the fee statement reads is, in general, gross income is based on total income, not adjusted, and lists on your federal tax return. So for those that are familiar, line 6 is what really identifies your total gross income. Those are the items that are included. So there was some discussion about various income that you would receive from other activities that you personally have. I want to also expand that the way that we currently evaluate it is if you have income in these other areas, if there is two earners, if you're a married, you know, married couple, it's split 50/50. So we take not just what you report on your, you know, from your W-2, but if there is these other incomes, then it becomes 50% if we can't identify who's that income is coming from. So it, you know, gets a little complicated, but that is how it's defined. So these are, John?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So as I understand it, that's a change from how we do it now because we only assess income earned from law practice. Is that, or is that not correct?
Well, let me.
No, that's not, that's not correct.
Not correct.
Yeah, so things like rental income, I mean, if, let me go. So this is what's currently included. We're looking at your, your line 6 of your, so when you look at those incomes, if you have any income that's coming from here, as far as when you're a couple filing, if you have interest income or investments, that is, that is divided 50/50. And it states that on the income, or on the fee bill. And this is where it's coming from on the table. So line 6, and then it goes through those various items. And if we can identify that that isn't, you know, that is your spouse's, that's not included. If it's joint income, then that is included in that calculation. So hopefully that's clear. And with that, this is the Board resolution, and certainly staff is available for any questions. Questions?
Alan?
I have a bunch of questions. Because this, to me, is a, the more I look into it, it's kind of a swampy area. I'm not sure from a policy standpoint where I come down. So let me just unload it a little bit. First of all, we've got two big buckets of people that we are, we're attorneys that we are concerned about here. One group is the group that's not making much money. And the other group is the group that's doing good, I mean, let's just call it the not making much money and the doing-good works, doing-good-works group, the IOLTA-funded people.
Those are not two distinct groups.
Yeah. They're not two distinct groups.
Well, no, no, there's overlap, right? But I mean, there are, there are some who are in one or the other. Not everybody's in both. And so the first group, I understand, there's, there are presumably a lot of attorneys in different areas, whether they're inner-city or rural or they're just, they're the people who are interested and willing to take on the toughest cases of people who might not be able to pay them and so forth and so on, who are, from a policy standpoint, I completely understand why we would be interested in helping subsidize those people. The downside, and there are always downsides, there's always two sides to everything, but the downside is there's some of those people who may not be making much money because they're not very good attorneys. So we're subsidizing people who aren't very good attorneys. But on balance, I understand the, you know, the policy of supporting that group to not make them much money. The people in the, in the doing-good-works, the doing-good-works group, as I understand it right now, is that completely just the IOLTA-funded legal services? People who are getting this reduction?
Currently.
Current.
It really is an effective subsidy to those organizations.
Right.
Because it is the organization paying.
So we're subsidizing a certain group of organizations in the state. So my first question is, are there other groups in the state that do the same kind of work as the IOLTA-funded groups that aren't getting the subsidy? And if so, what is the current rationale for that?
The answer is yes, and I can give you the rationale. Certainly, I was in here when that was established. But I think that's what we're attempting to address by bringing into this discussion nonprofit organizations and to be extended, it falls into that category of military service.
Okay, so then the question is how to expand the group. If we think it's a policy matter that, that all the attorneys in the state should subsidize the currently IOLTA-funded legal services groups, and perhaps if we take further action, you know, an expanded group, what groups fall, I mean, what, what categories of legal service providers should be, or 501(c)(3)'s or whatever the, however wide we do it, what we should be subsidizing, asking our member, or our licensees to subsidize? I don't have, I just, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little concerned about the definitional issues that we get into with some of these categories, but I understand, and I understand we need to talk about that. The, another point was we, I heard or I read that it's difficult to identify the income on household basis versus individual basis. And Lynda, you discussed that briefly. But isn't that what we're doing now? Didn't I see that, that the 90, the cuts that we have now are based on household income?
So the, the cuts for the 50% waiver is for household incomes under $20,000. The 25% waiver is for individual income under $40,000.
Do we have difficulty establishing that household cut at $20,000 now and give?
No, there's not any difficulty with determining the household income. The question is whether we would, if we were going to adopt that model, what, would we just pick one household size and say household, the way we do with the $20,000? Would we say household income under $155,000? And we're not looking at how big is the household. So a household of 1 or a household of 10 would still be at that $155,000. That's how it works with the $20,000.
I respect it just on that point.
Yeah.
I think I said this last time we talked about this. I feel like we're kind of overthinking it on the household side because of what you're trying to do is say, hey, there's people who are making less than $90,000 a year. Maybe they're working part-time or whatever. But what we're really trying to do is, and so we're trying not to impose a hardship. However, there may be people who made that choice and whose families are doing quite well. So maybe you set it a little on the high side. You're just trying to make sure that we're not overextending this and forcing other attorneys to subsidize people who don't really need that subsidy. So I wouldn't worry, I would set it towards the high side and just, and not worry about it. I don't think it's that big a deal, right? As long as, as long as it's a both and not a more. As long as, as long as it's a both and not a more.
So you would do household, but on the high side? Is that, is that what you said?
Yeah, because what we're, or, well, either way, like, to me, it doesn't really matter as long as the attorney, all we're trying to do is limit the number of attorneys who are in that under 90. All we're trying to do is exclude people who don't really need it. So pick, I mean, I don't mean to be callous, but, you know, pick a number, whether it's the 150 or the 200, but you're just trying to narrow that box a little bit. And either way, you're going to, you're going to do that. You might be a little low, you might be a little high, but.
Not as many questions as I thought I had.
Oh, that's it?
That's it, for now.
Okay.
I reserve my right.
Okay, you're, you're fully reserved.
Okay, so I, so I have a question now as to what the staff recommendation is, just to be sure I understand it. It's partly based on Alan's comment. So I understand the, the income level is about 90,000. 90,000 or below would get fee scaling. And then there's a question about whether to extend this to other categories, which is on the chart. So that's not a recommendation, a discussion. Are we retaining the current fee scaling categories? There was this whole harmless slide. Or is it just going to be 90, is the current proposal just an income test for individual attorney, including community property income of 90,000?
Well, so first off, the $40,000 scaling provision is statutory. The 20,000 is not. So it's a state bar rule that would need to be changed. What we're recommending at this time is that those folks in those two categories, as well as the I O T providers, be held harmless. So it is effectively a change because the percent of that scaling is not going to be the same once the actual fee goes up, right? It's no longer going to be at 50% or 25%. So those provisions would change under our approach, which is to hold harmless at the existing funding level. So I don't know if that clarifies it for you. We obviously have a lot of things to work through. Once the board approves in principle this direction, we need to work through with, really, with the legislature exactly what that implementation would look like, and then bring it back to the board, implementing rules. So today, what would be most helpful is for you to approve the principles of individual income, household income, and/or both, or just one. And then we want to have some discussion about these other categories and hopefully delegation to the chair and the vice chair to work with us to finalize any other categories for expansion.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So just one follow. So when you say hold harmless, does that mean?
No change.
The dollar amount that those groups would change who currently get scaling would remain the same?
Right, so-
So effectively, that would mean in a-
John can put that slide up.
And then we're overlaying new, additional fee scaling areas.
Right, so for example, the folks under the state auditors recommend, recommendation, the folks under 20,000 who now receive a 50% scaling, under our proposed approach, they would get an effect, effectively a 61% scaling because we're recommending that they be held harmless.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Brandon, but let me learn from those of framework so we can just like work through this. Let's just go point by point. The hold harmless, whether that's what we want to do. And then the individual versus household and/or whether we want to do that area. And then we'll move to the categories, to the fee scaling, so we can knock off the major points of the proposal. That sound good? So Brandon?
My question was more towards the overall package. And I apologize if this is already presented, but do we have an estimated cost of what this subsidy would, I guess, well, basically what the price tag is?
Yeah. So if you simply look at this chart right here and look at that $95, right? So the fact is, is if we assumed a $71 increase across the board, but we want to provide this support in these groups, the amount that the ones up above 90,000 would have to pay would be $95. So it's a $24 increase or going from 21% to 29%. So does that answer the question, Brandon?
There's not a cost per se because we're not recommending that it, that the general fund absorb it. We're recommending not the licensing fees for those that don't get the subsidy increase.
And just when you say nonprofit slash military, is that all nonprofits, what's the nonprofit definition there?
You know.
Any nonprofit?
On this, both in my state bar profile demographic information and the 2017 attorney's survey, we asked people sectors for nonprofit, you know, nonprofit, didn't get into more detail than that. So this assumes that everybody who said that they work for a nonprofit works for a nonprofit that qualifies. So this number, if, if we scale it back and say only this specific group, then it would be less and the overall impact would be reduced.
But on the other hand, the military, there is no number in there for military because we don't know.
And I'm sorry, I guess my question went more towards, what's the amount of fees that we're, we would be unable to collect if we adopted this proposal?
I think the, the concept is we will collect the total amount of fees overall. There'll be no change. It's just who is contributing to that overall will change.
So with each, with each attorney who gets a lower licensing fee, that will increase the amount that the attorneys who are not subject to any scaling pay. That's right.
Which is the point Alan was making, he uses the term subsidy. That is ultimately what is going to happen in the sense that the pie is going to remain completely intact. It's just how you're slicing each individual piece. All right. So maybe the, let's start with, is everyone okay with delegating authority to the chair and vice chair in conjunction with the staff on doing the final negotiations as to the fee scaling? Is there any objection to that concept? Okay, I don't see anything there. That's helpful because it's a very fluid situation with the legislature. Now, let's take it to the second point, which is, is everyone comfortable with the hold harmless idea of the folks who are currently receiving a fee scaling, that that total amount does not change, regardless of the fee increase? Renee?
Not quite. I think that if we set, if we do set this bar where I was proposing before, where there's an individual income and then there's a household, you know, upper bound, there may be some people in there that, that wouldn't qualify, and I don't know why we would need to grandfather them.
Okay, so I'll take that as you would not be in favor of, of freezing holding harmless to people who would?
Not, not wholesale. If they, if there were new criteria that they didn't, and my, my just kind of overall thinking is that, you know, we're, we're asking, again, we're asking the other people to pay fairly substantial subsidy, and we need to make sure that we're not unfairly asking them to make that subsidy.
Understood. Alan?
I would also add that while we're talking, we know that this year is a one-year fee bill, whether it's a one-year fee bill, which leads into a multi-year fee bill or not, I think we should keep the concept that at some point, these current fees that the people who are receiving, or who are on the scaling, will eventually go up pursuant to some kind of index, whether it's COI or something else, they won't remain fixed forever. In our negotiations, in our discussions, we should keep that as an option or as a, as a.
So essentially, an automatic or measured increase or inflation?
Yes.
Is there anyone else not in favor of the holding that category harmless? This is the 40,000, which is based in statute in the I O T codes. Sean, Brandon?
Yeah. I would say I, I don't oppose it. I was, I support the general concept, but I think consistent with Renee's comments, I just wonder, both with regard to I O T and other nonprofit organizations, if the attorney's income is $90,000 or more, I think that, I think that's what Renee was, I had the same thought. That creates an equity issue. In other words, why should someone who, for whatever reason, works, you know, works part-time at a law firm and makes 95,000, they pay the full freight, but somebody who's working in a nonprofit, yeah, making more would be exempt. So there are policy, there are additional policy considerations because you could work part-time in private practice and make more than 90, whereas if you're working full-time in a public service, nonprofit-type job, and that's a contribution that we need to take into account. So I think we just need to grapple with that. And then I also wonder, in the broader category of nonprofits, there definitely are people who make more than 90,000. And we, it seems to me, we also need to take account of the type of nonprofit. I mean, some nonprofit entities are political. I don't know the full gamut of them, but that's a really sweeping category. So again, there's some things that should be taken into account.
But I, I want to clarify what I think is the, the distinction about whether or not to, to approve conceptually the hold harmless approach. So right now, for the 20,000 folks, that is a household limit. So holding them harmless, even if we adopt a household test, will be fine because they're already proving that based on household income, essentially, if they get authorized. The 40,000 is an individual income test. So it's there, it's that group of people who, if you adopt a household income test, right, they potentially could fall out of eligibility. The I O T scaling is not based on the income of any attorney working in that organization. It's simply scaling provided to the firm, the organization that is paying the fees. And that's why I say it's, it's an effective subsidy to the organization, not to any particular attorney. So we don't implement an income test on those attorneys now. And when we're talking about the expansion to a nonprofit, I mean, it's something to discuss, but if you took the status quo approach, using the I O T model as the status quo approach, it would be scaling for, or subsidy for the organization, not based on the income of any particular attorney working there.
So maybe we need to ask the question, if you go back to the list of who you're holding harmless, maybe the answer, maybe it's not a one-size-fits-all answer.
Maybe, certainly if we're going to adopt a household test.
Right, because that would apply to organizations.
Right. And this is one clarifying point. So on the I O T organization? Let me restate it a different way to be sure I understand it correctly. So the I O T scaling applies only to attorneys who work for an I O T organization, and the organization itself pays the fees directly to the law, not the individual attorney.
Yes, and Dean is here.
Correct.
It's wrong, but um, yes.
Okay, that's an important, so thank you for clarifying that. I heard that earlier, but I didn't quite process it, so thank you.
Any, Mark, you had a comment on the whole comments?
I do. Oh, we have a couple of questions here. I take it that whatever we plan we come up with, the legislature has to approve that, right?
Correct.
And I have, I guess what is a basic question, when you put up on the chart that the $71 per attorney, is that exactly how it is sort of structured? In other words, or is it a total amount for the bar that increases the total amount of fees by what looks to be $71 in attorneys? In other words, my question is how do you increase a certain group of attorneys to $95 if the legislature is only approved an increase of 71?
That would be something we would work out statutorily.
So it's, the 71 comes from the state auditors recommendation. That would be a flat, applied to all licensees. In discussions with the legislature in terms of scaling, that's when the fee would change for categories.
Okay, but it's, when you're talking about hold harmless, it's really a net zero. In other words, the, the total amount of increase is whatever it is, a million dollars. And that's broken, but how it's broken out is what we're talking about.
Correct. The pie remains the same. It's just how it's sliced. You said there were more questions here on?
Well, Josh had a question to me, and I don't know if you're going to ask this.
Any, any more comments on the, the idea of hold harmless? Debbie?
Yeah, like, she had a, there's a slide up earlier talking about the nonprofits, and you had it broken out that the nonprofits are only the ones, not just I O T, but the ones that do provide legal services, but not I, but are I O T funded organizations, correct? So those are the only nonprofits we would be funding. Who would get scaling?
Well, that's the question to the board.
But that's different than the whole board, I guess.
Yeah, and we'll get to the, we'll get to the categories, which thing about, did you?
Yeah, Mark convinced me.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to Alan. We're, we're in muddy waters. And I just wonder, I don't know that we're going to get anywhere today on this. There are better answers always, and I'm just trying to figure out if it makes sense for us to try to accomplish this at this moment, or hold as close as we can to what we currently have, because there are a lot of other issues that are swirling at the same time. So I'm just personally struggling with how far we want to go today to try to, and when I mean today, I mean a recommendation to the legislature that is part of our fee bill to try to accomplish what I think is all good intentions, but very complicated area.
Right. And so just to add context, I think the time is right because there are discussions ongoing about how to do this. To, and the first point that I wanted to make sure everyone was comfortable with was the delegation of authority to the chair and vice chair. But it's very meaningful to get the input from all of you because what happens in those rooms is that we come up with proposals and we see the reactions. They have their own positions and we sort of work through them. But it is very useful to add, make an argument for a position that we're all very comfortable with. So, or at least the majority of us are comfortable with. So that's, that's why we're going through this exercise now.
Yeah, and it's actually a really important component of working through a fee increase overall with some of our stakeholders is that we have an updated fee scaling proposal that's responsive to the realities of how expensive it is to live nowadays. So I, I just concur that. It is important that we move this forward now, the extent to which we have to work through all the details here, you know, defer to you all.
Right, I, you know, the concept is what I want to nail down. I don't think we're, we should not come to some number, you know, in terms of the, with the precision, because these are all, may change as we go along. But, but if we have an idea of, do we, are we comfortable with an individual measurement of income versus household? I think those are all good things to know. But I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know already, Josh, in terms of the process.
You're asking for, I was trying to escape giving you my opinion, but you're asking for it, so I'm going to end up giving it.
Yeah, sure. Okay, and so then how about on the income versus household? I think we have, sort of, it's mixed right now. And the staff's recommendation is to go with a 90,000 income.
Individual.
Individual, sorry. Individual income, which has support in the legislature.
And this really only applies to that first group that I identified, which are the low-income people, non-I O T necessarily, because the legal services groups that are receiving the discount now are paying for the dues of their attorneys that work for them. So the attorneys are, aren't paying their own any way.
Right.
So it's, it's like we said, it's essentially a subsidy to those organizations, not individual attorneys. So the people who we're really talking about are the non-I O T funded legal enterprises, but the folks who just aren't making a certain amount of money.
Right, to, I think you point, put it, perhaps maybe folks who are just not generating sufficient income. I think you said they may not just end up being good warriors.
Well, I said that most of them are probably the ones who are, ones who are doing difficult work and maybe often difficult circumstances.
Right.
But, but the effect of subsidizing everyone who's not making much money is there will be some percentage who are not making much money because they're not good attorneys. So we're subsidizing not good attorneys, but that may be 3% or 5% of the overall group. I'm not- I'm not, I'm not suggesting by any means that all, all the attorneys who are making less than, you know, X number of dollars are doing good work. My hunch is that most of them are, they're taking on the tough cases, they live in areas where the demographics don't allow for the kind of fees that might otherwise support greater income and so forth.
Right. So any further comment on the household versus individual income, other than what we've heard, or any questions?
I should agree with Renee, the two together are, make more sense than just doing individual. I agree with that.
Okay. And then on the final point about the carving out additional categories in which to fee-scale.
Sorry, did we get clarity on whether it's an and or an or?
This recommendation sounds like it's an and. I don't know if you want to go around, it sounds like it's an and.
Okay, that's what it sounded like to me.
Okay, sorry, that, that's what I thought as well.
And is it an and at the 155? I know we're, since we're not going to get into the numbers, but I think we, we do want to talk a little bit about that, that that's the household size of three, the state average in California. The Pew scales and the scales go all the way up to five and above.
Alan?
I just had a question about whether we thought it made sense to use the average, because to me, you know, is that better than using the mode, right? What are most household sizes?
I don't know. The data don't, I don't even know that they produce a mode.
I would probably argue for the higher end, just to avoid this becoming, becoming a problem where you end up kind of throwing the whole thing out because, you know, people worry that too many people are going to be caught in that net. So I just, I don't think we're going to lose a lot by making it a higher and.
Higher than 155? Okay. Any other comments on this? I suspect what's going to happen is, we may advocate for a and, but there'll be very strong feelings about where they want to go and then we'll end up, talk.
I just think you're going to get less pushback on the and if it's higher, right? Because it's hard to argue that someone making over $200,000 needs a $20 break from other people.
Okay, understood. Okay, and the final piece of this is, do we expand the, the idea of nonprofit or other places to capture additional fee scaling? So then, I'll say, perhaps consider that the income, whether it be individual and household, would probably capture a lot of this already without making a distinction about, you know, nonprofit, legal services, direct legal services, and other nonprofits. So we may be accomplishing some of this, when I, when I say some of this, some of like the idea that nonprofit organizations are doing good work and they should get a break by just with the decisions made on the income.
Now, my feeling would be that we should look at expanding the type of organizations that would receive, or I continue to call subsidy, to nonprofits that provide legal services or direct legal services to clients, unless we're convinced that all of the, that only the currently IOTA-funded legal organizations that are getting the subsidies are defining a certain type of provisional legal services that is, and are doing 100% of what needs to be done in the state in that area. If there are other, on the other hand, if there are other nonprofits who are providing legal services or direct legal services to clients beyond those IOTAs, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be encouraging them and subsidizing them as well. And I don't have, I don't have a factual basis for why the current IOTA recipients are the only ones who are getting that subsidy now. So I think that's an open question.
Do you want to share, so the, one person or organization that has advocated for expansion of this provision is the First District appellate project. And I asked Linda to reach out to kind of get the director's thoughts on this, on how we might kind of define nonprofits, and that would be eligible, and it was sort of interesting, if you want to share.
What he's suggested was that, he suggested that the reason why that IOTA programs, IOTA-funded programs, get this reduced fee is that their funding is coming from a state bar source. And so if that's what supports the organization, then the fees that they're paying to the bar go back to supporting their organization. And that's not, that's not essentially true, just because that the source of IOTA funds is not from licensing fees. But he suggested expanding that to say, any organization that gets fees from the state, some kind of funding from the state might qualify, since we're a state agency, that organizations that receive funding from the state should be included.
So this would be, the appellate projects, you can immediately think of all of the organizations in the state that are contracted to do dependency council representation. Parents and children in dependency proceedings currently not receiving IOTA funding, obviously providing direct legal services to indigent clients. So those immediately come to mind when you think about it that way.
Sorry, when? But if you said anybody who got funding from the state, you would still have to have the provision that they're providing direct legal services to clients, correct?
Right.
You're not suggesting, he wasn't suggesting any kind of funding from the state?
No.
Okay.
Other thing is, is that like the state attorney general's office? I mean, there's the...
Well, public defender.
Yeah. Yes.
So you have to think about that.
Public defenders and DAs are funded at the county level, and they're not nonprofits, they're not nonprofits. There you go.
There we go. Okay.
We see.
Phew, just make sense of that.
Well, so however we end up doing it, it seems like there is support for the idea of expanding the pool to include non-IOTA nonprofits that provide legal services or direct legal services.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, now, any other considerations you want us to have come armed with as we continue this process?
There was the question of active-duty military that I don't think is yet discussed.
Thoughts on that? I think that the California Medical Board does provide, if I remember that slide right.
Yeah, I would definitely be in support of that.
Can you move the slide back, Sean?
I'm trying to get in my mind the different categories we have here of military. So let me take some hypotheticals. Someone takes the bar and becomes a licensee of the state and goes into the military and is getting military compensation benefits and so forth, and someone wants to retain their active status in the state bar. That's one category of people we would be considering subsidizing. Another is someone who's been on active duty, never been on active duty, but is in the reserves and works as an attorney in the state, is called to active duty. And while on that active duty, we receive a subsidy, we already do that. Then the third category is the spouse of an active-duty person, whether, an active-duty person. And that would be based on either a individual or household.
Well, no, when we talk about, this is a category, it's a separate category that's not income-based. So the spouse would be, would be the pursuant, for example, to our new military spouse rule of admission, that, that would...
Well, Josh and I are in sure the same muddy waters of concern here, because, you know, obviously you could have an admiral whose spouse is, is an admitted attorney, licensed attorney now. And that would seem high, given, given the income level of 06 or 08 flight officer. So I don't know, I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, obviously that's, that would be the outlier example, but I'm not sure whether it's worth getting into this kind of grandeur conversation. I'm open to it, I don't know where I come from.
I mean, my, my sense of this discussion is, you make these cuts with the idea that you try to capture the most good while minimizing these type of scenarios, if possible.
But I think the driving philosophy shouldn't be, unless we adopt it, shouldn't be, we're going to give a break to a military spouse just because their spouse is serving an active duty. It should be because somehow or another there's, there's a burden placed on that person to practice in the state, and that should be subsidized somehow, right? I mean, this isn't a thank you for your service kind of philosophy.
That might have hurt.
Well, the military, the military, like in the medical board, the military licensing waiver, that is a thank you for your, it's not income-based. But if, if what you're saying is you don't think that that makes sense, period, or it doesn't make sense with respect to the spouse, then that...
Yeah, I don't know what I'm saying. Josh may, may know better than I do.
Look, I think, I can tell I'm in the minority here, I think it should be income-based, period. Just, I'll just express to you that, anything else I think just becomes very muddy and crossover and very difficult to do across the board. So in my opinion, you set a rule, you establish it, people fit in it, trying to make all these exceptions is what makes the difficulties.
Sean, and then Brandon?
So, you know, I tend to agree with Josh, subject to the hold harmless, I mean, the IOTA exception, I think it makes sense for us to continue with that. On the military, it strikes me that most active-duty military wouldn't be practicing law. If they're not practicing law, then they could go on inactive status. If they were practicing law, I don't know, one way or another, we should, would be worth finding out if the military pays their licensing fees. They, I don't know. But it seems like inactive status would solve most of those problems. So that's, I think that's something to consider in deciding where you land on that.
Brandon and I, I think we'll wrap it up.
I know as a trustee who has served on the hardship committee where we review these applications, and also we'll get, you know, whether fee scaling is appropriate, I would be more in favor for bright-line rules because I foresee changing these rules as putting a tremendous amount of strain on staff, trying to figure out, you know, if, if people do qualify for it, these are for carve-out exceptions. But I think, you know, the more specific we can get, the better for our staff and then also for us who serve on these good cause committees and trying to come up with some sort of equitable resolution to people's hardships and then the different circumstances they find themselves in.
So you're, you're agreeing with Josh?
Yes.
So, but you were initially in favor of the military, not to draw this out, but I think I'd see where you're going.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sensing two...
I think, I think Josh's idea is that there's a check and a balance to it.
Right, income sensitivity, both on an individual and in household, and strong support capturing the nonprofit direct legal services or legal services. So I think we'll need just a motion as to delegating the authority to advocate on the lines that we've discussed and have consensus with.
So may I?
Any objections to subsidy, a roll call? All right, okay, just do a roll call.
Can you mind me to make one?
Brandon and then second one, Renee.
Why'd you pick him?
He goes, and he's like...
Right, implicit bias.
I love his attitude.
Roger?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan? Duran?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manny? Man, Joseph? Andrew Kues? Pertula?
Yes.
Salad?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Study background?
Yes.
All right, thanks everyone. Let me just confirm, there's nothing else before this body, and so with all that, thank you very much.
Don't forget lunch.
Oh, much, this meeting is adjourned. Just want to note the time, 12:37, everyone.
Good luck.
Good meeting, let's...
Thank you, that's great.